I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America. To the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I forgot to ask her about it. Turn the phones down too. Morris, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Anytime. Reason why I'm here is the sign issue up there at the...I don't know if you guys have talked about it yet or not, but Main Street put a sign project together for that, see if we could get on that parking lot up there. I think you guys have got a copy of the picture of the sign that we're actually talking about doing it. City Welding gave us a price of $3,000 to build this sign. We went to CVC, the CVC is going to give us a portion of the money to pay for making the sign. Basically, what I'm here is to get permission, to have it put on the lot. And the other thing is, with infrastructure, the way you guys are doing it and stuff, going through a contractor and having to design and stuff, it would be nice if we could see if we could get on the infrastructure plan. Simply because it's going to take a half yard, a quarter yard for a base to do it later. You're going to pay for five yards of concrete, almost $200 a yard. So we'd like to see if we could get on that plan, see if the town would include us in that as far as that sign base. If you guys choose to allow us to put that sign on. I don't have an issue with it, I think you should be involved with it, so.
So, yeah, Morris, or David, I agree. I'm looking at our miniature version of the parking lot. I mean, it would make sense to...where would you think you'd want to put it, Morris?
Well, I think, I mean, this is my preference. I think it needs to be somewhere on the east end, preferably. We don't want to get tied in too close to the clock and all that, you know what I'm saying? So, and it, the thing is, if people get out of their car while they're walking towards downtown, or walking towards Jefferson Street, it'd be nice if they had somewhere where they could see it. The way that's proposed, and that's the wrong one, it's actually, it's a one that's got...
That's what she had.
It's like that one, I'm sorry, but it's, I've got one copy that I drew.
How tall is this thing, Morris?
It's about...
Fifty-four, sixty-six.
Well, that drawing's not correct on height, and this drawing's not correct on height either, because there's ADA standards on it. And we want to hit the ADA standards on it, which I've talked to Andy out of City Welding on. But it's, I think, the total height of the whole thing is going to be about seven feet.
Okay.
And the way it's set up is it's going to have, one side's going to have the Rockville city map that Main Street does. We figure after we get it put up, we're going to get more people wanting on the map because of it. It's got, it's got some of the city municipalities on, it's going to get more on it next year when you guys get moved down here to the next...
Does it have the depot restrooms on it?
It does have the depot restrooms on it.
Okay.
And then the other side will be the Park County Bridge map that's got the places to stay on it and stuff. And that's how we can get CVC to help us foot the bill on it.
So how much does it cost, and how much does CVC pay?
CVC's going to pay a thousand. They've approved a thousand, the cost of the sign, Andy priced it at three thousand. It's going to be powder coated aluminum, so we don't have to worry about it resting, going back and painting and stuff. It's going to be relatively maintenance-free. The sign, taking care of the signage would be, the way we've discussed it is, is CVC wants nothing to do with taking care of any of it, so we figure Main Street will have to maintain the signs on it, which are going to be, they're going to actually be blown up, laminated, and UV protected, and then they're going to go behind Plexiglas. So there's very little that can, you know, very little maintenance to it. And then every year, as that city map changes, we'll have to put a new city map in there.
So how much is Main Street putting into this? How much is Main Street putting in?
Well, as of right now, we're going to put, we're putting anything that we can't get somebody else to help foot the bill.
Oh, okay.
If the city wants to put some more into it, we'll gladly accept it, you know? But, and PCI said we might approach them, because the actual plan of that map is, I don't know, the way it's worked says Rockville above it, and it's established. Well, we're kind of hoping that can be like a uniform deal, and if we want to put one down at the depot, hopefully sometime later on, maybe up higher, up here at Square, out by the park, out by the grocery store. And then if the county wants to go and put one in Bridgetown or whatever, then they just got to change the top of it. So it's kind of a uniform sign frame. We went with a single leg frame, less concrete, less area to worry about, and that's why we went that route. But anyway, that's what I'm here for, to see if we can have permission, see if you guys will put us on the infrastructure program, and anything beyond that, we would gladly welcome. I don't have an issue with it. Somebody wants to make a motion, I don't, if you guys want to discuss it, I don't care, but.
Do we need him to talk to Luke, maybe?
Yeah, we'll have to get, I mean, we're trying to think he'll have an issue with it, but.
Yeah, I would assume it'd be somewhere around the exit on the east side of the parking lot.
Something else, and I don't know if it says on that map, because that's not the... There's a, you guys have got another map in your file somewhere that she copied, it's just not that one.
No, this is just signpost.
The base... I'm not an engineer, I'm a construction worker. I didn't know what size the base needed to be, so when it goes to the engineer, it'd be nice if he could get an idea of what size the base it needs to actually have to hold that sign up, because I have no idea. You know what I'm saying? I'm thinking something 12 inches and probably 32 inches long, but he might say, engineer-wise, you need 40 inches or...
Well, yeah, okay, so he'll want to know the size of the base, I think he might have gone on, I guess Andy has that, but he'll want the base size.
He might want to give us an updated copy, that's the only copy of a map she had, or a picture, so that's all she found today.
This isn't going to like overhang the sidewalk or anything, is it?
And I'll come back in and pick the copy up later.
So is there stuff on both sides of the sign, or just on one side?
It's a two-sided sign.
Two-sided.
So I got the measurements correct ones on?
No, everything's correct on it except the height. And that's because we get in the ADA thing. When I drew it up, I kind of liked to have it about this height for somebody that's halfway short. And then it was brought up to me that we got ADA issues we got to deal with, so we'll have to find out what the ADA elevations are.
I'm going to call Luke tomorrow, see if I can get him down here later this week to spot the light poles and all that, so we can start the wiring and all that, so.
And there's no lighting on this signage, so we don't have to worry about electrical for it or anything like that.
Randy's got, I got a copy from Randy and I'll show it to you.
I mean, later on, if somebody wants to put a light shining on, that's their business, but I've... You grab parking lot lights and stuff.
We made it up front to call it, too. I mean, it's not going to cost that much to do, so.
Probably need something rented next to it, I would assume. Somebody's probably want to decorate it.
Do what?
Somebody's probably going to want to decorate it.
Well, I'm sure.
Okay, so did we move, I'll move, did we vote, did we do anything?
We didn't do anything.
Okay.
You haven't yet.
I'll move.
You have an objection?
No.
Oh, okay.
Second, hold on, favor.
Okay, Morris, thanks.
Okay.
We'll get this into the design.
Andrew?
Appreciate you guys. I brought some folders, just basic info in here. My name's Andrew, I'm with Washington National Organization called Optivise. I'm expecting this to take like three minutes or so, so I appreciate you guys, super grateful for the time, but I know you guys have real business to get to, so I'll be super brief with you. You guys want me to pass out folders, is there any, I don't know, does everybody get one?
Sure.
I've seen one.
I was just going to say, there's some familiar faces here. We've been working with the county for a little while, we have, there are two different folders. There are two different contents in there, and... All right, anybody else?
Leave one for her.
Gotcha. I'm going to leave one, I'll hold on to one, just to kind of go through, and then I'll leave it with whoever, so. The one that says Optivise now on the front, that's just kind of the background of who we are as a company. We do a whole heck of a lot. We worked with the county for a couple decades, I think it was. I'm offering some of the supplemental health benefits, cancer, heart, accident plans, things like that. That's who Washington National is, they're insurance company, been around since 1911. Optivise is an accumulation of four different sisters companies that provide a lot of different benefits to employers. Some basic information in here, the first one tells you all the health benefits we offer. I spent some time talking with Randy and Karen, and there are a couple of those that we think may make some sense for the city folks. We're going to kind of dig into that at a later date. There's some technology, information on the technology we offer, there's a website that we can make for you guys, and goes over just some of the highlights of what we are as an organization. That's, again, appreciate you looking at it and stuff. At some point in time, it'll probably bug Randy about some of this other stuff as well. The folder that says Washington National is the real reason why I'm in front of you guys today. This year, we rolled out a brand new benefit for the county, it was an absolute home run. I don't know if you're familiar with the ladies in the Otter's Office, but that's who I directly work with over there. When I approached them initially, they're like, oh yeah, it's great to have new contact, they have some folks that carry stuff with them, and they're wanting to make some changes, so obviously, taking care of the current folks was number one priority. Throughout the conversations, we have a particular life insurance policy that I thought might make sense for them. They warned me, hey, we have a lot of vendors coming in here, we've tried this before, it doesn't always work out. And I explained to them the uniqueness of the policy, which, long story, very, very short, it's a guaranteed issue, so everybody qualifies, permanent life insurance often lasts your whole life. If you're still kicking at 100, they just give you the money between now and then. Your rates don't go up, your benefits don't go down. It's portable, so if you quit, retired, get fired, it goes with you, again, without the rates going up on it or the benefits going down. That's the type of life insurance that builds up the cash value, so over the course of the years, it actually earns for you. The fact that it's available on payroll deduction, there's really no other vendor that can check all five of those boxes. It's a pretty neat opportunity. With that being said, they warned me it would be kind of tough, and I said, hey, appreciate your, appreciate the information. Generally, when we do this, we do it with a lot of schools, counties, municipalities. We generally get between 30 and 50% of the employees participate strictly voluntarily. And we were right in that range with the county as well, so it was an absolute home run. And I actually, in the folder, Otter's Office was kind of enough to give them kind of a letter of recommendation. I let them know that I'd probably pass it out to you guys, and they're happy for that as well, so. Brochure in here, has the information. The second thing in there is kind of a letter we like to distribute to the department supervisors, just to give them heads up, hey, this guy's coming out, offering this type of benefit, it's a one-time opportunity. People are encouraged to visit voluntarily, and it says that on the bottom section of that, in very bold letters, voluntarily. We're not the guys that are in here bugging and harassing people or anything like that. People want to come check it out, awesome. As the folks that saw us at the county can attest to, we do some pretty cool prizes. Everybody gets free gifts, we do some cool raffles for, at the courthouse, there was a...
Not everybody.
Yeah, not everybody. There was, I think, three winners over there, they got a TV and a couple Visa cards. But a lot of times, there's Michael Kors purses, and Instapos, and Airfryers, things like that. There are some strict rules that we abide by on that, but it is, like I said, no matter what, we make sure we're doing some nice raffles for everybody. So if we got the approval to make this available for staff on a voluntary basis, I could work with Randy and Karen on, as far as figuring out where the employees are housed at, and the best approach, and work for those people to make it as convenient as possible. That's essentially what I'm asking for, is the opportunity to reach out to those folks and make it available. It's not absolutely no harm, no foul, but like I said, it is something that, there's some people that can attest, there generally is a lot of value to it, so. Any real quick questions or anything?
Doug, have you talked to any of the guys, employees?
Not yet, no. But, I mean, I'm sure they'd like to listen to it.
Then we don't even, like I said, it's some of the departments, where are you at? What do you do?
Well, I'm with the town, utilities.
Utilities, so a lot of times, and every department's different, like we can sit there, people can visit throughout their lunch breaks or whatever. Sometimes we come in, like the road guys will come in right at 6:00 AM, be available for everybody all at once. Like at the courthouse, we sat there, I think, for a day and a half, just kind of in the hallway, and people visit voluntarily. Whatever's easiest, though, like I said, we're not going to ask around everybody up or anything like that, whatever. If that's what's most convenient, we are absolutely happy to do that. But that's, like I said, we kind of work with the department supervisors on whatever's most convenient for them at that point.
Yeah, I'd be Doug and Brandy, that's kind of the two...
Mr. Mosley, you guys are housing the two?
Yeah, she has the office staff, and he has all the utilities.
Utilities, which we do.
Well, of course, there is police, too.
Yeah, I think...
Fire.
I do apologize, I've been running a million miles all day today, I've been mountain stops, I do apologize. I believe that we said there was about 70 total employees, and I think a little under 30 full-time, does that sound about right?
Yeah.
So we would have to decide whether or not we're going to make it available to just full-timers, and full-timers, and part-timers, it's up to you guys.
Well, let's put it this way, Bill, Brandy, Doug, y'all want him to come and talk?
I don't think it hurt, I mean...
As I said, worst case scenario, we come in and give some people some free gifts, but if there's no interest, it'd be the first. But like I said, if so, absolutely no harm, no foul. I told, I think it was Karen, I've actually told you, if there's not enough people to make it worth your guys' kind of, the juice worth the squeeze, or the squeeze worth the juice kind of deal, we could look at alternatives. But generally, we come in here, you guys have whatever it is, just call 50 people. If we have 20 or 30 of them enrolled with something, then generally it makes sense to make it available on payroll deduction at that point, so.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we can kind of circle back around, we're pretty doggone tied up for the next week or so, but probably by the end of the week, I could reach out to Brandy and probably connect me with yous.
Need any official action from the board, okay.
I'd like some permission for him to offer stuff to the, that's another reason why I love him.
If you can allow it to be done through payroll deduction, then yeah, you would want to do that.
Make a motion, make it available.
Hold on, favor?
And last thing, at the end of the day, I'm a sales guy, we've worked with a lot of people in the area. Guys, feel free, if you know anybody that works in the local area, or runs around or eats a business, that might want access to the benefits. I'm not hard to hunt down, I'd love the opportunity to talk to anybody you guys might know in the area. I'm new to the area, just relocated out here in January.
From where?
From Ohio.
Ohio?
Don't judge, I'm not a Buckeye.
You're not a Buckeye?
I'm a Bearcat, but I'm trying to convert to Hoosierism, so. Like I said, anybody that happens to knows anybody in the area that might be able to utilize any of the services that we offer, I definitely appreciate a phone call, email, text message, whatever it is, and my contact's everywhere, so.
I'm just curious, why you got to give the disclaimer that you're not a Buckeye?
Ooh, man, I don't like Buckeye fans, man. I grew up around them, like I said, my parents are Buckeye fans, they're my family, I went to Ohio State. Nothing against them, I'm drawing Buckeyes here. I mean, you guys got plenty of friends, you guys run in packs, but I'm here in Indiana, it's worth pointing out that I'm not a Buckeye, so. Missages me just a little bit, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, sort of these folders, just, if anything, use some some meto.
Yeah, I might take one downtown. I don't know if they can read.
Storytime. Okay, I have claims to be approved in the amount of 463, 851, 93. If you have any questions you would like to discuss on those?
Oh, I don't know if it's any questions, just observations, you know, we, Brandy pointed out a minute ago, utilities for the wastewater, $10,000, annual budget's $90,000. Yeah, it takes a lot of money to run those utility sewer plant. I see we paid $4,019 for excavator rental, I assume that's the big cat we had over there?
Is that permission, Mr.?
No, that was for Harris, Denver.
So we, that RMC bill, that was for the work on, what was that, out north, the RMC?
41 North, on setting those poles.
Setting the pole. Okay.
And I do believe that will still be a reimbursable expense.
So we paid for a bike and pedal plan, final thing.
More reimbursement?
Yeah, that was due that.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm, nothing out of the ordinary there.
Motion to approve.
Second? Is it a second?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
While you're signing it, I sent out minutes from the April 17 meeting, and then we did hold a public hearing on April 26, just to discuss some parking lot designs, so I have some just documented minutes from both of those.
Washington, approve.
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get caught up, just so I don't have to...
Hey.
Hey. So I'm going to go ahead and include you on these, so I got approval on the claims, if you don't mind signing that, and then the minutes from the 17th meeting, as well as the public meeting on the parking lot discussion. Coming around to...
Just in time.
So how's that?
Oh, um, sorry, I tried to pick it up. That one. Okay, we have an amendment to our salary ordinance that includes two positions, as well as two amendments to salaries. There will be one including the town administrator position, as well as the utility superintendent position. We also have an amendment to increase our part-time electrical hourly wage, as well as our full-time lineman, that's just under our line, our light on our salary ordinance.
Anybody want to have a discussion about this?
Are we not supposed to, is that, does that cover it?
What?
For public discussion?
Usually, I know you'll have a reading of whatever it is, and then at the next meeting, you would pass that. I don't know if you guys did that or not, I missed the last meeting, so.
You want me to read it?
Right, and then at the next meeting, they had an open door law memo that came out on that, that said that you have to do that, so you need to read it at one meeting, next meeting you can pass it, so.
Okay, so what all do I need to include?
You basically did read what is changing on it, it's just you have to have the opportunity for public discussion. You have to actively read it, and then at the next meeting, you can actually pass it.
Well, for the public that's here, I mean, I'll start the ball rolling, I'm not shy. You know, we had a departure of our town liaison a while back, and there was discussion on what to do with that position. And after some discussion, these two, Doug and Brandy, decided they would split the workload. Doug taking on the out-of-the-office responsibilities, and Brandy taking on the paperwork side of it. That is a simplification of it, you know, we have 11 million projects going on right now, dollar-wise. How that breaks down into a number of projects, it's more than one, but less than 20, I don't know how many are up there right now.
There are several, I think I have 12 on my list.
12. So that's kind of what we're looking at, what we're doing here, we're increasing the compensation for, we're calling Doug, not only is he, what are you calling him now? Something nice, utility superintendent. Yeah, and Brandy, for her, she's taking on additional responsibilities on this being called town administrator.
Those two additions, and then our electric, we were making some adjustments with the wages for electric.
Right, we have Brett, he's our lineman, and then we have a part-time lineman that we really should have been paying more. He decided it's time to step up to that. So in a nutshell, anybody want to jump in here, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Pretty spot on.
You know, the overall, we're putting out additional money for these two, but we're also nowhere near what total compensation was for the prior position. So overall, isn't that a fact, isn't that a fact, there's some savings.
So I will put an amendment to include into the next meeting to be voted on, unless there's any other comments or...
I come always having to talk.
You good at it. Anybody else want to say anything about it?
Nobody?
Okay, we'll close this discussion, then.
Okay, we'll move on to the Jeffries Farm Agreement. Mike Jeffries usually reaches out to me every year about this time, on the fields down at the wastewater plant, if the guys have any input that they want to, they're wanting to still farm and do the same thing that they're doing down there that they have in the past. We just have an agreement that was put together, I think, when that originally started, which I don't know how many years ago that was, that I like to get signed.
I drafted it, it says since I've been here.
Oh dear, you drafted it?
So within the last five or six years.
And that would have been the first year, I think, was, and then, so this would probably be year five or six.
So what, does this fine amount for, are they just farming, do we get compensation for this?
We never have been, they were just utilizing it, but...
That's just the ongoing agreement that's...
Well, how many acres? We have three there, five there.
I assume that's the one we always use, so.
It is, yeah, I just changed the date on it and present it.
Okay. Not a lot there, is it?
Is that who we also give the sludge to?
I don't think so.
I don't know about that.
Well, it says the land's been used for bio solids. So we're putting bio solids on this ground.
I think that's who does, spreads our...
Jeffries?
Yeah, or whatever that big payment we have to do.
Who hauls our sludge?
The Wheeling Brothers.
Wheeling, yeah, Wheeling's the company that hauls this stuff.
They have a whole, we have a, we have a plot out here for a long time.
You had not?
No, they've been taking everything out like Eli Lilly.
Oh, okay. Well, so what do we need here, just?
An motion again to continue, so I can give them a signed copy of that.
Was your second?
I did.
Get in here, sorry. Hold on, favor?
Okay, big amendment to the holiday schedule that everybody's fussing about, but tomorrow is actually not a holiday for the town of Rockville.
Because there's no local election.
There is not a local election, although we follow the state's schedule. This will not, tomorrow will not be a paid holiday for employees. Should they choose to take that day off, or already made arrangements, then they'll need to use their PTO time for that. So this is just an amendment removing that day as tomorrow, as well as the election day that will be held in November. So I just need an approval on it. So that cuts back to 12 paid holidays instead of 14 this year.
Dang it.
I know.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye. Well, there goes that vacation.
Yeah. Keystone software renewal just came in actually today, so I went ahead and included it. It is up $870 from last year, for a total of $10,590.
So, just to educate myself here, they, 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 their software is for, what all is it?
All of our programmings that come, so all of your reports that you get, all of our billing.
It's payroll, payroll's there, too?
Yeah, I think they actually break that down on here as well, what they actually charge. They charge a set fee for your device, as far as your license, and they charge you for fund, payroll, your billing cycle. Yeah, the three of them, back here. We had to pay just a one-time setup fee when we did the automatic deduction, but that's not an additional charge, but it's something that we, once we paid for the setup fee, it's included in our renewal.
So with the payroll stuff, you guys still have to add up time, cars?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's tedious. I don't know, I guess we can keep doing it, I mean, electronic is kind of the way most people do it these days.
Would Harris be better, or are they not comparable in price, or? I personally prefer Harris, just because I've used both of them.
Well, they have to...
I think theirs is a lot more user-friendly.
Do they integrate with this?
That I don't know all the details. I would, I would go out to say the majority of municipalities use Keystone. They've been around probably the longest, not necessarily that they are the best. I don't think that Harris does municipalities, but I'm not 100% on that. There are several vendors out there, but if you go into choosing, like if you chose one just to do a payroll, they probably won't integrate with Keystone, so you can't use...
Well, changing software for payrolls is a nightmare.
And it's stuff just to look into, you know, other vendors that are out there.
Things can always be better, I know.
Yeah.
But, so what do you need?
It's what we have for now.
Are you just implementing it?
It's, because it's $10,590, so I'd like an approval document to renew our software. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Hold on, favor? All favor?
Okay, um, have the DES work agreement as well as it's on the agenda, but I do have it, um, the agreement from the town and Cindy's, um, that she put together. This is, she did go over the agreement from DES as well and it does include everything for that grant that is needed.
Right. So, yeah, he's running, what typical construction inspections, ten, ten percent?
Do what?
Typical construction inspections, ten percent. I think, yeah, it is, it is, the South Market, that's, that's where, right where it was, um.
That actually sounds a little low, but if you say so.
Well, that, that's what structure point was charged, I, I've just, he's got forty thousand for construction and oversight, which I assume the same thing as inspection, and, you know, it's, it's about a two-point-five, so it's really a little below ten percent. Uh, so yeah, I was just curious on that, um, right-of-way engineering, nothing's outside of right-of-way, so we won't have any land acquisition issues, we should not. What do you think, Nick?
So far, so good.
So far?
Kinda thick rock in that.
Yeah, most of it's just your standard fluff in the back.
We just do that to keep.
Yeah, yeah, you get past the sign, signature page and there's like ten more pages of all these.
But.
Yes, I spoke to him today. About an unrelated matter.
Do a lot of it.
Said about an unrelated matter.
No, it's town, a town issue, I just wanted to.
I know, I mean, I talked to him about county.
Huh?
What's the work?
Oh, this is for the water project that we got the seven hundred thousand grant, Oka grant for, yeah, okay. From the well field.
Uh, so the payments coming out of the Oka funds then, it's not coming?
Well, Oka's only covering seven hundred thousand of a two-point, we think, two-point six.
Right, but then payment contingent upon Oka's release of funds is a difference, though.
Okay.
And that may have been, I don't know, she's brought that to me today, we've been approved for it, so I don't know if that's what she's saying or if that was.
What page you on, Nick?
Honestly, maybe tied.
Page four, prior to the. Three point three.
He's not, you're not looking at the same one.
Oh.
He's looking at Cindy, that Cindy's agreement with the town, so our.
I don't have any issue with that, I just. If, if they don't award funds, there's no payment.
This one is Decker's and this one, I mean, it.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that one.
I want you to look at it, but post-Cindy, that doesn't.
Oh, this is agreement for brand administration, this is Cindy's thing, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to.
I just needed to get both of them.
So yeah, this is coming from the Oka, that other is gonna come from.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Um, so yeah. Let the good time grow, let's start another project.
Please.
You're not busy for the next couple of years, are you?
You don't wanna run out of stuff.
No, don't wanna run out of work. Mike, any comment, where's the water guy from you Matt? Are you excited, water project?
Can you tell?
Yeah. Well, you look very excited.
There's a smile, that's a, to be indicated.
Calm down.
Okay, while Nick's reviewing that one, um, and I don't know whether you guys, I know you don't have a whole lot of information based on, but Doug had mentioned too that they'd like to take bids on the cell of that black Chevy Silverado. Um, he, and Doug gave me some information so I can put together a bid packet on that. Um, just need to, the only thing I didn't have is if you wanna state a minimum bid or not, or if you wanna just leave it open.
Hundred and forty thousand.
What?
In a hundred and forty.
What?
Hundred and forty thousand on that.
That was the mileage, but yeah.
Okay, uh, well, I would say leave it, leave it, do we have to send a minimum?
You don't, no, but.
I'd say minimum five hundred bucks.
Before I put.
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
You don't know, so I think you might draft it tomorrow and the thing run like a top, next day you might not make it, however parking lot.
We turn, we need to turn it around.
Well, it's a great running truck, I was gonna buy it for my wife.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, so you're saying you want a five hundred dollar minimum, I'm like.
Here, here a thousand, I don't know, we need to have, we should have something.
Yeah, somebody came in, fifty bucks and.
Yeah, we don't want that, we want at least a seven-tire.
Yeah, at least one, whatever it'd be worth to scrap it, probably.
Yeah, you take the whole truck and scrap it. I bet it's a truck, I, I would probably.
It's not that high.
Thousand. How'd you go a thousand? Thousand, and you might get a thousand.
Truck's anything to have, I tell you.
What year is it?
Make sure it's a day it runs.
Ninety-seven.
Two thousand.
It's a two thousand seven.
And what kind of truck is it?
That black one with tinted windows, you can't ever tell.
Do you need it for the farm?
Yes, way too dark.
My son's only eight, we got a while.
Does it have lights on it?
You drive the backyard.
I'm not saying we won't bid on it, I'm just saying.
Larry will have me buy it, so it's grand.
Okay, minimum bid thousand, what do you guys say?
I'm with, I'm with that.
Yeah. Well, I will put together a notice and send it all out to you before it's advertised, but I'll plan on putting that in the paper, running it once.
Anybody leave it here? Maybe it might not be enough.
Sorry.
Pickups are crazy, even the junk ones, I don't think it's that.
No, I know, I'm sorry.
Used to be, but I don't think it is.
Without it going one time in the newspaper, then I'll put it into the next meeting.
It's a two-mill drive, four-point-three, I mean.
Well, it's a weekend, weekend hobby truck, yeah. Go get some mall, get some trucks.
I don't know.
I'll move, I'll move a thousand.
Is there a second?
Second, alright, thank you.
All favor?
Alright, okay, so the only other thing I have left is once Nick is okay with the work agreement from DES, then I'll just need a motion on it as well.
Well, we're up to Nick, so we'll just kinda segue in there.
You can just pass it pending approval, pending.
Motion to approve pending attorney's approval.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just to keep things moving.
Okay.
I don't have a whole lot, um, we had our ordinance day the other day, we settled one of them, the other one got moved to May thirtieth. I since talked to Josh and to Bill and they've been in contact with that homeowner and they're making improvements. It was written up by, as a unsafe property, um, by the building inspector. So the hope is by May thirtieth, their next court date, they may be compliant or at least close to compliant. Um, I did talk to the homeowner myself and she seems to wanna get the property corrected. It's not their primary home, um, so they're working at it. Um, I did make it through, um, Bill and his guys to give me a sheet about forty to fifty properties.
Okay.
Um, just to get statuses on everything, some of them are significantly older ones that Mike had written up and done things with and, um, but I think we're now on the same page as far as where things are based on what they had in their records. Um, and I believe Bill probably can tell you more about what they've been doing lately, but I think there's a lot more ordinance violations have been written up lately, so. Um, but that's one I've been primarily working on. Yeah, so that's all I had.
Oh, um, while we're in your arena, uh, the, the cemetery stuff, the fund.
The fund.
Yeah.
So you just need a resolution creating the fund, um, or actually transferring the fund to.
Well, Brandy, why don't you talk to Mr. Bumgardner and figure out the proper, whatever Nick's talking about.
So for our purposes, you just, you would just have to approve a resolution authorizing whatever fund number it is be, uh, put in an endowment at the community foundation, I would assume.
Are you talking about the cemetery?
The donate, this permanent maintenance cemetery donation.
Whatever.
The fund, that, that money.
The forever fund into the maintenance fund for the two cemeteries, right?
Yeah, yeah, we want to endow a fund over at the foundation.
I don't think you have an existing fund there, I think they'd have.
No, we don't, they have set one up.
So yeah, so somebody needs to talk to Brad about setting a fund up. On our end, we just have to pass a resolution authorizing the money from our front ear.
Don't you have to write a resolution?
I did, yeah. I'm the president of the board, but I'll have to recuse myself on that.
I probably looked that fund up once.
But what needs to happen before we do that is just somebody, I don't think I'm probably the appropriate person to do that, so.
Well, we have cemetery permanent, if that says the forty-four hundred, that's the earnings that's accumulated in there.
So what money are, what money are you talking about?
Oh, this doesn't have investment, that's why it doesn't, it's thirty thousand plus a four thousand four hundred forty-one dollars nine cents, this report doesn't have the investments. But we have thirty thousand in CD, yeah.
But we just need to talk to Brad about what needs to be done to make that happen.
Park, you should talk to him, you're on the cemetery board.
On my end, I can send you a resolution. Yeah, I'll send you a resolution to transfer some money, but somebody needs to actually talk to Brad.
Park's gonna talk to Brad about setting up.
I, I've got some notes on it, I'll touch base with him and.
Alright.
Well, we'll get it.
I say, I see him all the time, but I don't think with me being on their board and me being your attorney, I'm probably not the one to ought to do that, most likely.
You sure about that?
He's probably sure.
Seems like a conflict.
Okay.
I mean, I, on both ends, I think it sounds fine, but that's just me.
Thanks for asking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, uh, do I have anything else for him? I, I don't know, where's my notes, I don't have them. Um, no, I don't, I don't think so.
I do not.
That was the, the main thing.
Did we end up okay on the, uh, contract with the? We gotta revise the revision back. Okay. Okay. Sure, okay. She was out of town last week. Must be, so. Alright, that's all I had, Nick.
Okay, uh, our statistics, we had thirty-two criminal investigations in April of twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-four in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had a total for this year of a hundred and two at the close of April and a hundred and twenty-one last year. Uh, fifty been violent in nature with seventeen of those being in April. Had two traffic crashes, towed one vehicle, one incident, four to eleven arrests, six alarm calls with three of them being sent invoices according to ECWS. Had sixty-eight entries, fourteen felonies, seventeen misdemeanors, twelve infractions, four ordinance violations and fifty-eight warnings. Uh, we've had, in April of twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and seventy-nine calls, thirty-four crashes, cases, five crashes, two incidents, one tow. And we had, uh, forty-five entries with three felonies, six misdemeanor, thirteen infraction, forty-six warnings and fifteen arrests. Any questions on the statistics from this year last? Okay, uh, the, the next thing I have is, and I realize you guys probably aren't, possibly aren't ready for it tonight, but, uh, the new building, we would like to try and find out a little bit more about that so that we can, uh, get estimates uh, and present those to you so that we're not, uh, coming at last minute rushing everything, so.
Well, yeah, we need to, I, it'd be nice to get a floor plan for that, that building, Bill, and, uh, to see what the heck it looks out, looks like and, uh, see how it would work for all, 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 all the departments, uh. Yeah, we need to start looking at that, getting the budget.
I've talked to Chad about that, so.
With the lead time on stuff, he knows how long.
He's gonna dig up what he can for us.
Real good.
They've made changes over there over the years, so may not be exactly wrong, but check out the close.
Do we need to do another walkthrough?
Oh yeah, we'll have another walkthrough when we get, I mean, they've got till May, next May be. You know, if they get out earlier, that's great for us, but, I mean, we're, no point in getting too excited till.
Right.
More towards the end of the year anyways.
Well, we started the ordinance violation process today, uh, we did twenty-one ordinance violations today.
Referring to properties or?
Properties, uh, tagged vehicles on the properties that were expired or no plates at all or false or fictitious plates, whatever the case may be, took a bunch of pictures of some properties that are already in the process, but we need to keep giving updates. So we did several things today as far as, uh, ordinance violations.
And I was gonna ask, Brandy, do you know how many, you've, like, how many of the people that have been invoiced for the alarm violations have actually paid?
So, um, actually Cameron had, um, texted me today, but I didn't have a chance to get him a number, so he doesn't have that yet, um, for the month. Usually he'll just ask me for the month, so I don't have April's. Um, what I feel like they ran into the last couple of times they had a discussion about it is some people are forgetting the fact that they're forgiving the, so if they're doing seven alarms per month, well, if five of those are new customers, then you're not getting any revenue off of those because of that forgiveness, so I think the one that we had today was probably a forgiveness one too, so we're sending them a letter.
Okay.
Stating that, you know, it's your first offense on the alarm, you know, maybe try to resolve if there's such a.
Is that once?
Because these have all, have they all, they've all been basically false alarms, correct? I mean, there's not, which is a good thing, but, um.
Is that annual, semi-annual, what was that forgiveness program?
One time.
One time a year?
One time.
I just believe just the first time and.
One time only?
Yes.
For in perpetuity, never again?
You get a letter, keep it.
They have to have a certain set distance between each one, like thirty days, sixty days.
There was nothing, we had just said one, that's all that was said in meetings, so.
Take care of your own.
You voted on it, so.
Well, yeah, I'm old, I have to figure out, you know, you try to remember everything.
I know, but.
I mean, we had a company that got their forgiveness and have had four or five and, and they pay them, so.
So they reset it one and then we sent them another letter saying they're forgiven.
No.
No, we sent them a letter saying you're not forgiven yet.
We just send you a, we send you a invoice.
You are no longer forgiven, here's the bill.
So I'll, I'll try to get him an update on the total for April tomorrow.
We, we also had a pursuit, um, we stopped it right before the entrance into town, it ran through town at high speeds. It was caught outside of town and there was a large amount of methamphetamines, uh, on that parole violator that we stopped.
And it's laced with fentanyl, wasn't it? How many times do you throw stuff out, like three or four or more than that?
Probably four times, I think.
So who stopped them, was it Rock, RPD that stopped them first or how?
They stopped themselves when they ran.
No, I mean, the initial stop occurred out Sarsfras or somewhere south of town.
My understanding was, I believe Chris may have been the one that, uh, actually seen them and, uh, said they were heading this way, so what we wanna do is.
Stop them before.
Stop them before they get into town because.
Right.
That was recorded.
We had a bunch of different people staged at different intervals and we just weren't able to get behind them until they got into Rockville. And then Kenley, Kyle Kenley got behind them, was able to. Everybody else was like six car.
Got them stopped, then the passenger became the driver or something.
Right, right.
Was she hurt when he threw her out?
She, she won't claim anything, I asked her yesterday, huh, so.
Well, glad no one got hurt.
Good choice in mind.
Uh, yeah, we're fortunate that nobody got hurt.
Yes, and I was worried when they got out there in the country, somebody in a buggy would.
Well, Bill, is that all you got?
That's all I have.
I think really, everybody did great.
Well, not dumpsters, I guess dumpsters are popping up.
So I'm still waiting on clarification on the dumpster ordinance.
Maybe we should just write a new one, right?
Well, dumpsters in, in, in residential areas, it's just.
We said nothing in the front yard or side yard, well, I think we said nothing in town.
Dumpsters in residential areas, period, should not be allowed.
I think we gave them a period of time if it was a construction.
Yeah, this one's on Jefferson, you see the one on.
You can have, yes, if you're under construction, yeah, if you have a temporary dumpster is one thing, but if, I mean, there, there's houses, obviously, and we've all seen them.
Can we not find a copy of that?
That are just using for their weekly trash.
I have found a proposed amendment to a zoning ordinance, but I don't even see the zoning ordinance, so I don't know how.
Might be better suited for us to just draft.
We, we passed an ordinance when Mike was here.
Well, I remember we had one, how many dumpsters do we have in residential areas, Ken, you probably know.
You got, there's two, maybe three on Jefferson, you've got one on Jackson right now, has been there for a long time. The problem with the, they're gonna be next door to somebody else before long, uh, is that they, I don't know why they can have them, they're, they're, they're single-family homes.
Right.
And the garbage truck leaving four-foot ruts.
That's what I know from Jefferson Street, that, the ruts.
When they pick them up.
Well, I remember a small town north of us, haven't been through there in a year or two, but I know they had, uh, it seemed like everybody in town had dumpsters in their front yards, it was just really amazing and sad, uh, cause it really takes away, the trash cans are bad enough if they don't take them back, but the dumpsters are just.
I think it.
Go ahead.
I think it would be nice if we do, like Nick suggested, get a, just redo or do a new dumpster resolution, that maybe there's a permit issued from the town.
For a temporary only.
For a temporary only.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta have one, it's fine, but don't use it year-round.
Well, if, if you have a permit, you come in, you get a permit and, you know, you get it for thirty days, sixty days, whatever the case may be, then it's clear, we've got a date written down, we don't have to track down the trash company and find out when it got there and go off of that and then have to kind of call them in to testify possibly.
Yeah.
They come in and fill out their permit, they don't have a permit. If they come in and fill out their permit, they don't have a permit, you know, there could be a, a fine for not having a permit.
We'll pay the permit and the state's a reason why they need it. But you know, one is dumpster, there's most of them.
Are you just talking about roll-offs or are you talking about dumpsters all?
Well, no, I'm talking about the.
People just use for their.
The three cubic yard dumpsters at the, you know, they're, they're just three cubic yards typically.
So we actually revisited this back in two thousand twenty-one. I found an email now. Um, there is one that's published that says no dumpsters in the front yard, but there was one that, we don't have a signature page to that was never published, at least not that we can see, that was done after that date in, it's not dated either. So I guess what I would tell you is I think we ought to revisit it to update the ordinance because the one about the front yards doesn't really give much detail and the other one gives detail, but I don't have a signed copy, so it'd be impossible to enforce.
Well, could you add to that also? I mean, you've got front yards, but the corner lots that have.
Why do you have the front yards? If it's a residential household, you don't need a dumpster unless you have a permit for construction or, you know, temporary usage. I mean, that's what you want to allow. You don't want year-round dumpsters. I mean, that some of them have been around town for years.
I, I can see like you, if you're a, a landlord or a landlord and you got tenants that moved out, you may want a dumpster to.
Well, and then there's a question, they bring up, good point. There, there are some multifamily units that do have dumpsters. That makes sense, but.
What we passed on that was it had to be in an enclosure.
Well, I, I guess what I was talking about was, I, I've seen some people trash some houses that they've rented and landlords just come and get a dumpster and take everything that they've left inside, which would be a temporary.
Yeah, a temporary.
Not construction, but I could see other reasons why you may need.
Yeah, there, there's justified cases or instances where they're needed.
Then part of the other problem was when, after we said that we, they needed an enclosure, then the trash company couldn't get to them. And so then they needed it be moved more toward the front in order for the trash truck to have access, cause they said they couldn't pick them up, so.
Well, a little more study here so we don't, don't, uh, screw it up too bad, but we just need to look into it.
So do you want Bill and I to work together on something to propose to you?
I'd say that'd be a great idea.
Okay.
Cause our existing things are non-enforceable, am I right?
Well, we need to, we need to, yeah, stop the growth of dumpsters in towns everywhere.
I sent you, um.
You really?
We'll have a whole lot. Um, linemen have been pretty busy with new services. And they've worked on some of those lights on forty-one. They got some of the LED, new LED ones installed. We cleaned our lift stations. Our main four lift stations have been cleaned, jetted. Some drains for, um, our engineers so they could do the water project, they clean some drains so they could get some.
So there's no meters installed? Our flow meters are installed?
Where at?
Well, in these lift stations.
Yes, the new ones, they, just the Omni sites is what you're talking about?
Yeah, they're installed.
Yeah.
And how are those red? Is electronic? Do we have to go out and actually read them?
Well, I mean, we, we get a reading on our lift stations, on our four big ones, on the hours every day.
Yeah, but the ones that Rod, the Deckard Engineering were talking about, to try to figure out stormwater or inflow, those things, that's the same thing we're talking about here?
Those will be added to that list too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they can do the access on a computer.
You can, yeah, I can, uh, with the password and all that, you can actually go on it, on my computer and see what's happening with the lift station and get all the data and everything off of it, but, um, but, yeah, they were all installed.
Okay, so they're installed.
They were supposed to do a drawdown, did we do, we did the drawdown test though? So we shouldn't, we should convert it on a computer, it should convert it to gallons, get, mix up the hours so you can just get on and see like, it pumps so many gallons.
Okay.
Or leave, yeah.
Oh, in the parking lot?
Okay. So, yeah, those were installed.
Okay, good, good.
So, um, I believe the pool is ready. I think everything's all installed. I think the chlorinator was the only problem today and I think he's got that lined up, so.
And there's water in it, I saw.
There's water in it?
It might be a little chilly.
Yeah, we're just waiting on temperature and everything, so. And then, um, starting tomorrow, uh, Tony, Tim, Mike, Dave, and I will be with them for a little bit. We will start hydrant flushing. So that'll take the rest of the week probably for those guys.
Did we advertise that so that?
I believe it was. I asked, uh, Jim, he said it had been, so, um. Then, um, outside that, the new thing is we need to decide on the digger truck.
Yeah, uh, did you get quotes?
No, the, um, let me see what I, the guy sent us a letter back stating that he cannot give us a final price, uh, or projected price of it going up. He cannot give us a final price until twelve months before delivery.
Okay, so.
And it takes how long to get?
It's gonna be almost three years to get.
Okay, well, we, we know it's gonna be on, uh, over three hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was like three hundred and two thousand, I think, so.
So, well, I suggest.
But it could be four hundred thousand by the time.
Well, it could be.
I would hope not, but.
I suggest last meeting, we pay it, we, we start making payments now, try to spread it out over three, maybe four years, just to reduce the impact on our one-year cash flow. So I guess, well, how would they bill us now for this future?
I, I don't know.
Brett, back there?
Brett, he said we could pay on the delivery. I don't know, he, he really didn't say an option to pay.
Well, they don't wanna bill you now because they don't know.
Well, yeah, but you know it's gonna be over three hundred thousand dollars and you know kind of what the spec's gonna, I mean, you could come up, well, you could come up with a truck spec for today and that price and put the clause in there that final price will be determined at time of delivery. And, but still, I think it'd be nice if we could start paying down a hundred thousand a year.
Couldn't we just put it in a fund?
Well, we could alternatively be set up, uh, 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 like a fire truck fund, be a digger truck fund, one or two, one or two ways.
Probably better do that way.
Well.
No, cause plus.
Well, yeah, that, not, not.
Put a cap on it or something, cause then they could say it's five or six hundred.
Well, yeah, okay, so I guess what the board needs to do is we need to, I make a motion, we establish a.
Is this not something we would, I guess, potentially look for a used one?
You could.
Problem, problem with used ones and that kind of truck is, is they're getting rid of it for a reason.
And there's not usually that big a difference in price, I mean, comparatively.
I mean, less like you said, like Brett and I talked about that today, just the options being it's so high. Um, unless you find a company that ordered maybe two or three of them and decided they didn't need all of them, they'd like to sell one, but man, I mean,
How often?
They, you've been around, most people get rid of equipment for a reason.
How often does it get rid of their stuff? Like, would they have anything that would be decent?
I mean, we, we could always call an ad. You know, depending on, you don't wanna get, we wanna buy a nice truck.
Yeah.
Well, you know, another alternative.
It's got a pass test and.
We are setting aside two hundred thousand a year in depreciation in the light fund. So that's what we said we're gonna do. We do that, that's two, four, six over a period of three years, six hundred thousand depreciation. So in a way, we're already setting aside money for a depreciable asset, which this is. In the meantime, you could keep an eye, well, though, damn it, though, you have to order things.
You gotta order the truck, yeah.
Or you have to go and look for a used one. Anybody else wanna say it?
I was gonna ask you, uh, what's the inflation rate right now?
Well, you're looking at what, seven percent?
That's what I was.
At least.
I mean, that's a pretty easy figure. Seven percent on top of three hundred and eight thousand dollars is, you know.
Over three years, you're looking.
Over, yeah, over three years. Is that what it is, three years?
Yeah, and it's like three years. I think the big thing on it is, is they're not gonna purchase a chassis until they're ready to build a truck. You don't wanna buy the chassis now and have it set in the parking lot for three years and then try to pull it in or build a truck or. So, but that's one thing, what the chassis is gonna cost in three years.
A dilemma.
Well, I mean, either way, I would be paying that seven percent as we go. I mean, if we're gonna set up a fund.
Well, we already really have one set up, two hundred thousand depreciation a year. We just have to fund that. We just have to fund that. Um, well, at the end of the year, we should have a small surplus left. We should. Things go like the plan. You could say, okay, looks like we had a little extra at the end of the year and we can set that aside in, in depreciation. But we have to do what we say.
Yes.
And we, I, I've sat down, Dan, or, you know, Dan and Brett talked about something we can cut off the truck that would make it cheaper, there's just not a lot. There's just certain things you need for your bucket truck. Spent your truck.
And, I mean, once you get to a point, it's not, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars is nothing.
I hear three hundred and two thousand if it comes in for two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be, it'll come in more than that.
So do you wanna just make a motion to, to, to buy this truck? Is that what you're?
Well, I.
We need it.
Dig your truck, is that what you're talking about?
I don't think it's gonna get cheaper and if it does, then we're.
Well, it's obviously not gonna get cheaper. And I mean, we could always look, but it's just putting it off, it's still gonna take three years to build.
Yeah.
And you're dealing with the truck that we just spent on the cylinder and now it's got another hydraulic leak that he's looking at a price.
Is this the one that has those leaks all the time?
Yeah, it's, it's what, twenty, twenty years old, Brett?
Yeah, it's two thousand. Derek's two ninety-nine, all right.
Yeah, so, you know.
If we get twenty years out of this one, then.
I think we're doing all right.
We'll be in good shape.
Yeah, you, when you look at the years, that really.
I'm making a motion to buy. One second.
All in favor?
Bye. Bye.
Aye. Okay.
We don't need to set up a fund for it.
I don't think so. I mean, we're funding appreciation, well, we set up the fund appreciation. We actually have to put the money in there, but we'll do it, we'll do it.
No parking signs are in, locates are good, so I'll get on them as soon as I can free some guys up for the school and everything. And then the other thing I got is on the Hustler, which, I mean, you guys said nurses, mowers, uh, Hustler carburetor is pretty much a jump. You're gonna have to start reaching behind you to choke it and all that and I don't wanna do it, but it's also when we call, we're thinking a hundred dollars, but a carburetor for that thing's five hundred dollars. But it's.
Well, how many hours on the engine, do you know?
I did not ask Alan. It's, it's one of our.
Older.
Older ones, not the oldest one.
What's the Hustler?
This is a lawnmower, Kubot and Crowers.
Okay.
So, um, which I know it's under my spending, but still, I thought I'd bring it up, cause.
What do you think?
Is that as good, is it good mowers?
Yeah, I, I, I would put the five hundred in it, cause I don't want somebody reaching back around a hot mower. You know, it's just not. And it, it's, it's not the one we'd wanna get rid of anyway. If we were gonna get rid of one, it's the, the John Deere's the one that we have a lot of trouble with, but.
Well, how many mowers do you have? Three or four?
Oh, we got two, three, four, five, I believe.
Five.
Four or five, yes.
Are they all Deere's except the Hustler?
Uh, I think they're all Deere, but that one Hustler.
Well, so you want a carburetor, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth the, with all the mowers we got.
I have carburetor.
Okay, so and then, uh, but we are had, he has looked at the mowers out north of town, so when we go to purchase, we'd like to look at them. Yes.
They're nice, I got one.
What is it?
It's a Spartan mower.
Spartan?
Where is that?
It's out north there. Tony's Mowers.
Oh, okay.
Well. How long have they been around? Have they been around a while, Spartans?
I'm not sure how.
The bad boy mowers, the guy that originally designed those is the person that designed Spartan. So they've been around long enough, their non-compete clauses expired and they're gonna start a new mower.
Okay.
I know, and you were saying around twelve?
Well, the one I looked at, the, the fairgrounds last, a couple of weeks ago, just for giggles, was, uh, they had a, a booth out there. It was a zero return, seventy-two inch, uh, gas, I believe it was diesel, uh, which seventy-two is bigger than what you would need.
Yeah, we know it was sixty for the cemetery.
It was like twelve something and I kinda see and said, hey, we, you know, maybe, you know, something about cemetery stuff like that. She said that they, they would be happy to work with the town on even better.
Is that air-cooled or water? Did it have a, is it air-cooled?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, can't think anybody's done a radiator on a tractor anymore, but lawnmower.
Well, unless it's Deere.
Diesel probably not.
They don't have it. Nobody has it.
I don't know, he might be a Volkswagen or something, I'm not.
Why, let's get a Volkswagen.
What did you last buy him on?
So anyway, they were working.
They did have headlights on them.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, but, uh, and the other thing is, is, uh, sometime in the near future, we will be probably trying to split a load of poles with RMC. We're down to just six thirty-five foot poles.
Well, what we get, this last two deliveries, we had. Yeah, they have.
Yeah, I think, didn't our poles get, our poles?
I thought there was a long.
Forty and forty-fives.
We got forty, forty-five and some thirties. Splitting with RMC?
Well, that's what he'd like to do when we.
Well, that sounds good.
Contact RMC then, before we do, get a price for sure.
Yeah, something was gonna take a long time to get, I think was the pole.
I was gonna say, there was a load of poles.
I think the poles were supposed to be a little bit longer and they'd come.
Oh, okay, good deal.
Okay.
Yeah, cause they showed up and just unloaded them all in one pile, so they're not separated like they're supposed to.
What, uh, well, you know about the Echo thing on the, 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 the sludge digester? Getting the sludge from the digester, this thing? Yeah, you sent that out or somebody did.
I did.
Oh, you did?
I was getting ready to say, what do you know about it?
Okay, so that's the.
That's what I had to come out, that's for cleaning the old digesters at Bonneville.
Oh, Eco Strux.
Eco Strux.
Eco, yeah, okay.
I was thinking.
Sorry.
It's weird all the time, so.
Well, anyway, yeah, I wrote on there, apparently the range, they don't know exactly what it's gonna cost. It'll take one or two days, base somewhat per hour. What is it, four times?
See, when you kind of looked at it, it was still wet. We'd just finished laying the flag. Those tanks are all dried out now.
Oh, they are?
You could send a couple of guys down there with shovels and a wheelbarrow and.
So we don't, you don't think we need to do that?
I don't know. I, that's up to you guys, really.
Well, you, you're, you're the licensed feller.
I mean, it just needs to be, they need to be cleaned, so.
Well, yeah, but you think we can.
Get into a clean, so.
You think we can get by just doing it ourselves?
Well, that's, that's up to him.
I don't have manpower, you're also good, with what's going on next. If he wants it done soon, now I've got crack ceiling coming, I've got.
But since it is dry, I.
And it should go pretty quick.
Should go pretty quick.
Well, give me that, give that thing back to him.
And he's just gonna put everything.
Yeah, I, I kind of like the guys to free up.
Basically, the range was forty-six to eighty-nine, one or two days. That's an eight-hour days. So if it's dry. It should go.
Dry, they're gonna put it in our, in our drying beds down there, so.
Okay, so you looked at this, you're, you, you're okay with it. Well, I thought we should probably address this thing tonight. Yeah, the guy says one to two days, the bid says. Uh, so it's kind of a range of price, like I said, forty-six to eighty-nine.
Now, is that, like, putting it in the lift stations or did you tell them about?
That's one, two lift stations, so.
Well, it travels two hours, a hundred and eighty bucks an hour. On-site hourly rate via a vac, for a vac truck, it's there at sixteen an hour. And then one-site support truck, uh, lay-down hose, actually, a hundred and seventy-five an hour.
We're, we're gonna have to get him in here soon anyway for the lift stations. We got two that have to be back.
Yeah, I told him that, I think that, I don't know, he didn't put it on there, but before he sent me that quote, I told him we had two lift stations that needed done.
So we would want him to maybe try to do it.
Well, it'd be nice to do it all one time, wouldn't it?
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Make that, make an extra trip.
Well, why don't you, why don't you revisit this Echo infrastr-?
Eco.
Eco, damn it, Eco infrastructure. I'm thinking, we do talk. And, uh, yeah, and see if you can get those lift stations. Okay, so I guess. What do you wanna do with it?
Wait.
Who do you wanna do it, Doug?
Well, we know we're gonna do it.
I mean, I understand what he's wanting to say about shoveling, but like I said, next few weeks with crack seal machine gunning, the flushing hydrants, hunter bunches, I'll have four guys doing that.
Well, I'm not against doing this. I'm just saying, do we wanna go ahead and, I mean, it's an hourly rate for equipment and manly, hours, should I say man hours?
So it's not gonna change if we.
People hours?
Oh.
Human hours?
Hours.
Hours. Work hours, okay. We're gonna do it, right?
Should, can we approve it and just see if you can encourage him to try to do both when he's here?
Oh, he was, yeah, he was here. We usually try to do that anyway.
Okay.
When he comes, we'll have multiple.
Yeah, we try to do everything we need back, instead of having to call him back in a month. Yeah, we try to do everything we need back, instead of having to call him back in a month.
Okay, well, well.
I think the lift station, I think the minimum's like fifty-five bucks.
Okay.
It's hourly anyways.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to pay him to try it.
Okay, so what's your motion sound like here, let's quit?
I make a motion, we contract with Eco Infrastructure to come and take care of.
Our digester?
Our digester, and hopefully our lift stations while he's here, he's able to.
So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, that was fun, uh, I didn't catch you up, you got anything else, Doug, in your list?
Another thing I would like to thank you, Max, for the help over on Harris Street, they were.
Yeah, that turned out good.
Yeah, and it turned, it looks nice over there, I mean, there's still some groundwork, but it, it turned out nice, and they were huge, huge help.
Okay. Um.
Were you able to get caught up on whatever we were waiting on for you to get better? Is that the point?
Uh, that's, I just told her I'd come along with him and just stay over there, she'd start the next month, I'll do the rest of that stuff.
Okay.
What stuff's that?
Twelve-inch main lower, we've got two more hires to do.
Oh, okay.
That was on our list, and there might be more now, I don't know.
Okay, um.
Were you born?
Yours was not on the list, so.
Were you born for the electric stations?
Yeah, we were on hold on that, so that's just whatever we're here to do whenever it's a much heavier.
What?
The lift, the electric chargers and stations.
Oh, yeah, well, we gotta pin down where they're at, and you're gonna bore the line to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Luke, who are we at here, Luke, uh, when's Luke coming to town?
I'm gonna call him morning, hopefully get him here by the end of the week, so we can pinpoint everything, he's gonna drive rods in the ground, so we know where to take the wire.
Okay.
And then, then we'll know for sure whether.
Yeah, just, you know, general comment to the board as a whole, we, we need to get that, I like to get habitual document, you know, something to put out the bid next meeting. So that's two weeks from tonight, so, um, yeah, Luke, uh, needs, Gil, Luke Gil from Deckard Engineering needs to know. That, that is our objective, and we expect them to meet that objective, is that okay to the rest of the board? Okay, uh, let's talk worship compactor, man, I, I just thought we might wanna bring it up, you guys saw the email?
Yes.
From the State Revolving Fund about the options on that worship compactor out on Strawberry Road, you know, we met out here with this, uh, Mr. Orman, a few. Kevin, a few, Or- or, how do you pronounce his name, Or? Ormay, anyway, um, yeah, we met with him a few weeks ago, basically, he said, you know, the state will, um, cover the cost of that worship compactor, and then. He put us in touch with the James McGough from State Revolving Fund, and he came out, I sent out an email the last week about options to finance. The one option I think's a no-go, 'cause he talked about just forgiving the amount of money left, that's on one of the debts up there, but it's a waste, it's the. Waterworks debt that goes back to two thousand and four, and this is a storm or wastewater project, so I don't think we, we, you can't do that. I mean, you gotta keep your expenses in the right, right area, so the other option he, he mentioned would be to do a, uh, some legal work. Uh, an execution of standard grant financing docs, uh, I don't know how much that involve you, uh, Nick, but, um.
Legal work would involve them a lot.
Well, yeah, I, I assume that's on our end.
Did I see what he said?
Yeah, it's that, it's that first part that's underlying there, basically, they're, they're going to pay for it, it's just how do we go about doing it? And it looks like we'll have to go through the paperwork, as opposed to just doing a loan forgiveness, 'cause it's not the same utility department.
They're willing to pay for it if we apply for a grant?
Yeah, yeah.
Essentially, we're doing the work.
I can assume the law enforcement's worth it.
Oh, well, my gosh, yeah, yeah, I mean, how often does someone come and take, yeah, we'll pay for that. That'd be nice.
Maybe we won't have so many problems as that would.
So I, I guess, further on that line of discussion, we, we need, uh, Brandy, you should probably, did you respond to his email? It came out like last Friday.
I did, yes.
Well, I guess we need to pick the option to go with, I guess my point, bringing this whole thing up and boring everybody with it.
We have to apply for a grant.
We, we need to say, we want option B, uh, um, which would be to do the paperwork for the grant. And, um, see what, get that going, now, we have already, we have ordered the equipment from, through Graves, and that's who's going to do the installation. Okay, um. Okay, Nick? Look serious.
Sounds fun.
Got that turning look on you.
Yeah, whatever you wanna do.
Whatever you wanna do.
Place the motion.
I move, I move, uh, we, we take the.
Favor? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, it's just basically, uh.
So can I have a copy of the grant packet then, so I can see what we need to do?
Yeah, he'll have to send it, he'll have to send it, uh, we just need to make a decision which way to go tonight, to keep that project going. Um, parking lot, we were hoping to have a big life-size design tonight, you guys, I'll probably, I printed the thing out, don't know why. You have to use magnifying glass to look at it, but this is the latest design, um. Yeah, the two changes there that we, we had incorporated after the last meeting of so many meetings. You know, we put that curb in on the landscaping there, off the, uh, Jefferson into the O M B alley or whatever, and, uh. The two, the two charging stations were moved down two spots from the, well, they were, well, they were moved to the west, and they were moved back two spots to the east. Because he was worried about them being hit. But, we just talked about this a minute ago, we, we want, yeah, we want Luke to know, we want the designs ready to go, bid.
So these are now the?
Yeah.
I still don't know what his issue is with, with the.
The charging?
The chargers.
Well, he, let me think, he, he, he was over there last Thursday or Friday, um.
And I thought they were gonna be on the outside, so.
Oh, well, we don't own that little section there, and if he put them there, he would like to have some protection for them. And he can't put protection there until he gets down to here, 'cause he can put up a bollard to protect them. He thought they might get hit, and they were just sitting, that would get hit if it was sitting right there, 'cause we don't have any authority to put.
Yeah, but we're still doing a curb anyways.
Well, we are doing a curb, but you know how if something pulls up to the curb, it can extend over the curb.
I mean, I, I understand what he's trying to do, but I, I guess in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't really matter to me.
Well, it's just a few more feet, not much, okay, so, uh, what else, Brandy? What was this thing, this is, uh, oh, yeah, you combined.
I was gonna say, community crossings, we need to talk about, we need to talk about South Market.
Community crossings, grant, I get confused, it's, it's community crossing, uh, uh, two thousand and three dash one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that Michigan?
That's, no.
That's, uh.
See, guys, that, that's, that's Howard Street. Walton Street and Anderson.
Okay.
Now, what do we talk about? We combined the two into one or something?
Yeah, there were actually two applications, one for Anderson, one for Walton and Howard, more concretely, I thought, because apparently the map says. Howard Avenue is what they refer to, which is actually Howard Street.
Mm-hmm.
But we are combining them, so that we just, basically just taking those two applications into one, making one project, so there was one desert number. Per indocks.
Okay.
So, um, I had asked for the cost estimates, 'cause I never received a cost estimate on Walton or, or.
Okay, and we have those.
Right.
Um.
So we, um, should be ready to put a bid together for that particular project.
Well, again, that's D E S, D E S is doing that. Uh, so, yeah, you might touch base if you have an operating and say, hey, we'd like to have that ready for the next meeting too, so we have two different products. We like the documents, we'd like them in by the next meeting, so we can, uh, put it out to bid, advertise for bids, um.
I've reached out a couple of different times, I haven't heard anything back on paving of Michigan Street.
Oh, yeah.
They have, I think I gave them a deadline of either August first or August thirty-first.
Yeah, they do have a deadline on that.
That's C C M G two, right?
That's C C M G dash two dash two thousand and twenty-two, the second round of twenty twenty-two. Yeah, this is the first round of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Um.
We haven't applied for a second round yet.
We have not, I don't know, we'll see how bad things come out on this first round, um, yeah, another question, Nick, uh, sorry. Uh, yeah, and, and we have two, uh, two-thirds of the stormwater board here, go stormwater, um, we, 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 uh.
Carefully, you'll have a meeting.
We, we, uh, well, there's, the, on, on Anderson Street, there, there's a lot of stormwater work. And no money has really been, I think maybe ten thousand when that project was allocated. The question is, stormwater board, do they, do they have to prove any funds? For us to use before we can actually use those funds?
I believe they have independent control over their funds.
Well, that's what I, I thought, and, and I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause right now I allocated ten thousand dollars.
They have their own budget and their own funds that they allocate.
I had fifteen thousand, correct, fifteen thousand out of their funds, their fund, to, towards Anderson Street. And, and in reality is, there's quite a bit more out there in stormwater, I believe that, and we might want to pursue a little more at our next meeting for that project. For Anderson, 'cause I'm pretty sure our asphalt's going to come in a lot higher, and so we could use all the help we can on that project.
When's Anderson set up to?
Well, we hopefully get the package to go to bid, uh, next meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not close, getting closer, but, uh, so, yeah, I just wanted to know, so we'll have to bring that up.
Yeah, they have independent control of their budget.
Okay, um. Oh, street sweeper, I was thinking about that again the other day, have you, you, you've looked at some, you?
We, actually, he talked to Crocker's Bill today, just a lady, he's, they're gonna put him in touch with the, a gentleman that runs it. So we know, they have one that's actually twelve years old, but it's a vac, so we're gonna get in touch with him to see what his feelings are on a vac.
What's a vac?
Actually, vacuums, it, it still brooms the curves, but then, instead of conveyor belts and all that pulling it up, actually, vaxs it.
What have we been using, just?
We got an old mechanical, it's got the brooms.
So a giant sweeper, like a big shop vac?
A basic one like that, plain jane, which we don't know where it hang on, on the old mechanical style. Having, uh, found one today at like a hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Well, mechanical style has more stuff to break, of course, we've had, the engine's been the issue with one we have.
Yes.
Of course, we gotta hand it down twice renewed or something, probably.
The thing about a vac, though, too, which I don't know what the cost will be, he, he is working on it, we're trying to find a town that's got him, so we can actually. Talk and see what first.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this, uh, for those that wanna know, uh, yeah, we're gonna have to set up and try to figure out, it's gonna be expensive.
Yes.
And we can't just do it, I mean, that, that would have to go in these street department expenses.
Yeah.
And, and, and so, you know, we, we, we need to plan ahead for this, this.
Oh, exactly, 'cause.
Machine.
The back, the back style ones have a big hose up back, that you could go up on the sidewalk, like, you know, like on Howard Avenue. How they're always piled up right here, so when you're sweeping, you can actually get out or have another guy there running, and you can actually back them up, back a manhole out. If it's full of leaves.
Well, if we can get an idea of what kinda money we're looking at, then we can figure out where to fit it in our cash flow in the next twelve, twenty-four months, I mean, we can't do it.
Yeah, that's exactly, so, we, we are working on trying to.
Okay, good, um, I think I ran out of stuff.
Well, on the street sweeping right now.
Yeah.
Uh, Doug, what kinda schedule would you like to, or would you put together to close a street? On the square to back sweep it, I mean, no parking, get in there, sweep it, open it back up? Is that something possible?
Well, that, really, the only place, yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, are, in a certain area, you want, the big thing on is the west side of the square. That's, that's about the only, I mean, if we come in at five in the morning, the rest of the square usually is empty, other than maybe the jail, if they have somebody that parks right there. But that's the only issue we have, is right over there, it, we've tried, several years ago, they sent letters out. And we come in that morning, and I think two people parked somewhere else, but they parked on this side of the square, so we still had to work around them, but. But, yeah, that, if we could figure out something right there, that would help that side of the square big time.
Won't you, they'll get together sometime and try to figure out the schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And then, um, another thing hurts on that side square too, is the urban barn chick, all that stuff on the sidewalk, and then, they decide after we sweep the square. Clean that up and blow it right back out in the rip.
Sounds weird.
That's a trigger for me.
Honestly, I probably shouldn't say nothing, but I'm going to, I don't understand how they could have all that stuff and narrow down the sidewalk like they did.
'Cause, does it, could, could a person in a wheelchair and another person walk through?
If he's talented.
Well.
We all know.
You know, what is, I mean, we, we, we have an ordinance that deals with sidewalk usage on the square during the ten days of the festival. Outside of that, I don't know what the ordinance says, um.
Does anybody else do?
Um, so.
I think they have, I believe, what, four or five foot?
I thought it was six.
Six?
Well, let's revisit the ordinance that specifies what we can, what they can do with our sidewalks, 'cause this has been coming up for a couple of years now.
Mostly from Liddy.
Well, she has a legitimate point, it is rather congested, and, and.
I, I'm not a fan of them.
And Doug has brought it up, that it does, you know, we sweep the street, and then they.
Hey, Doug, if she paid you blue twice.
So, so, so let's find out, sorry, Brandy, well, let's find out what that ordinance says.
All right.
And there, at the next meeting, that'll be something we can all look forward to, to see what it says. That'll be interesting. Yeah.
Where are we at on our project updates?
Which ones? Lost, lost track.
We haven't talked about South Market yet.
South Market, yes, what about?
Um. Well, the project update here is, uh, South Market contract is six million some dollars, our match is.
Yeah.
A million two, uh.
Look, I had the quarterly meeting today with N dot, and the only thing outstanding right now will be the right-of-way purchases.
What do you mean outstanding?
I can get reimbursed for those right-of-way purchases, but that wasn't done through the engineer, so I need to reach out to the girl from N dot that handles that. She can give me the appropriate paperwork, so that I can file for reimbursement for those.
Okay.
If I remember right, were they about two hundred thousand dollars, we have a little over six hundred, apparently, we applied for way more money than what we needed for right-of-ways.
Well, we did some baseball on the, uh, what, gift? I'm shocked, I don't think it was just two hundred thousand, I think there was one batch of right-of-ways that cost two hundred.
I don't remember, I just wanna ask, and I don't remember the total.
I'm thinking the total was in excess of six hundred thousand, and I think we.
For all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's what I'll be looking to see this week.
Again, I'm old and I can't remember, so I'm thinking, yeah, and that's what Structure Point, I believe, had in their original documentation, is, you know, it was, it was, it was a considerable.
I don't know that figure, but.
Oh, yeah, well, there was one, it was forty-three thousand. Forty-three alone, just for one.
I don't remember purchasing them outside of just last year.
Oh. Some of them. But, yeah, but we had multiple, we had multiple purchases, no, they were all bought last year, but there was multiple rounds of purchasing. Anyway, be interesting to see what you come up with, uh, okay, on, uh, so what else came out of the quarter, anything?
No, that's it.
So they've been doing, they've been doing the utility, the utility relocate's pretty much done, is it not? Are the utilities all relocated?
The, the gas and electric, I believe it is.
Yeah, all the gas, electric.
I believe, uh, Bloomingdale's been done.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, and, and I think joint's probably done, I don't think, I don't know if they even had to move any.
So, there's not gonna be any dirt turned until after the festival, is my understanding, I mean, we're not even changing, like, I mean, after the festival, stuff could really start to proceed.
Yeah, depending on the weather.
That's, that's what's gonna slow you down.
It may be winter by then, since we don't have spring.
Um, 'cause people have asked me, when do you think that'll actually start, I said, well, you know, utility, what case going on now, but I don't think they'll start doing anything until after the festival.
Here's your brick too.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to get samples of bricks.
They moved some today.
Oh, nice.
Oh.
So this is oak blend, okay, there's an.
That's all.
That's all we have, just one style?
That's all they brought me, three of the same thing.
So, it's the same thing, okay.
I thought they were bringing different colors, I didn't know, I was just included on an email about samples, and they asked where to send them.
I see it's a good chucking brick.
So the guy brought those today, but.
Looks like a brick.
It's the same thing.
You're fine.
Um, so these.
Decorative paving company will be subcontracted out through Foyt's. If you want other color options, but apparently Foyt's just said match what was out there.
Okay, so this is attempting to match what's there, well, I don't know. I must not over, overthinking, I mean.
Why start now?
They get shipped already sealed, and.
Okay, so, so, so we just need to approve this?
Well, I'm just saying, it's.
Well, I don't think anybody asked for any variants of color, so I don't know who told the paving company, but I'm assuming it was the contractor.
I think it's a lovely color, not too bright, not too dark.
Won't show dirt.
Won't show dirt.
So we want to make a motion to.
I move.
For those colors.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can be in favor since I didn't see choices.
Are you a posy?
No.
I was going to say, I thought, I thought I heard you say, ah.
I can't, yeah, well, no.
Okay, so.
The forty-one North Sewer.
Yeah.
I sent that out of the.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
What was the projected finish date, did I?
Well, is it August, or, I think it's August, isn't it?
Thought it was August.
What is my update, I don't know. I had it. Yeah, they, they basically moving along out there, here it is. Remain of the four-inch maimed board. Getting power set out there, we can have meters out there, we'll have meters out there, I assume, Brett? Oh, that'd be part, we'll be paying our MC. Okay. Install five. Yeah. I don't, is anything you want to add to that?
No, I just, I know you guys have it since I got that update today, he had been, I think, out, I don't know if he's on vacation or not, but he had something.
So where's this thing hooking in, I know I've, again, I forget things, but where's it hooking into our existing system? Where's it hooking in to us?
Right there by J R's Farms.
Right by J R's, which goes to Anderson, goes.
Yeah, they'll shoot over to Anderson and all that.
Okay.
I believe that's already done, isn't it?
Eh, I don't think it's hooked up, it's sticking out of the ground right there.
I mean, I've got it, it's been.
I think all the boring's done.
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
I think now it's just tying it in, and then, like, Ron Wheeler did call me, he can be allowed to hook to that, that house there?
What? I don't know.
I don't know if that's, is that gravity on that side?
It's forced to, for J R's, isn't it?
Lift station's right there, but he was.
I know everything from north coming south to the lift station is, but I don't know whether that's gravity coming out of it. I, I don't know, I mean, I.
I mean, it, obviously, it drops down that lift, it has to be pumped back up into it, but they called today, something about.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's additional customer, so he could go to the lift station.
Yeah, that's, if that's high pressure, yeah, he wouldn't want to hook to that.
Well, no, you don't want to hook to.
But I, I, I'll just go out and talk to the gentleman and see.
Well, yeah, I guess talk to the.
Because weren't there a couple of others that were interested in hooking on?
I, the only one I knew of was, was Shopka was going to get hooked into it, and then Wheeler thought his house. The who?
The plans, don't they still?
No, I've not heard about them. But Wheeler called me today and asked.
What about the nursery home, aren't they on a tank?
They are, no.
They're a treatment facility.
Oh, that's all right, they are on us.
They are, because they got a manhole right outside, south of the building, and it runs and goes down behind I G A.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, when we started this conversation, I think the only house that was going to be on it for sure was Seward's Place right there, I mean, just north, or just south of Shopka.
Which is Wheeler now?
So I, I don't know if that the house was.
See, I think that is the house, I thought mine or the person, that was the house that was supposed to be hooked on.
I think it's going to the lift station itself.
Okay, I'll go talk to him, he was wanting to know how soon he'd be able to get up to, I guess nine seven, subject trouble.
Hey, Bill, I forgot to ask, is there any other update on the cars, sorry?
That's right.
So, we're waiting on J T N to call us, we believe that's going to be sometime next week. And then, once they call us, we'll start taking shovel-ling vehicles out there. The biggest problem right now is, it's just, he's got a bunch of different vehicles from different agencies, and not just police vehicles, but, you know, town utility vehicles and stuff like that, so fire trucks and whatnot.
Your sidewalk question, if you want, it's five feet or one half the sidewalk, whichever is more, less?
Whichever, I think it was larger.
Whichever's larger, is the answer.
Whichever's five foot.
Right, because that sidewalk's not a ten-foot sidewalk, so it's five foot, basically.
It also says it may only be displayed during business hours, owner, I'm sorry, business hours and shall be removed when business isn't open.
Unless it's during the Bridge Festival.
There is a variance for the Bridge Festival yet.
Okay.
But that's merchandise.
Well, what's this, okay.
So if you have tables and chairs out there, decorations.
We don't have anything that really addresses that, do we?
I told Bill I was going to go talk to her and just kind of clear the air and see what's going on.
Well, that'd be good.
Has anybody even asked, you know, sometimes you could just ask people and.
I know her really, but I'll just go talk to her.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a big issue, but it is. Out front, especially, then the north side with the tables isn't that bad, it's the very front.
Okay.
I've heard lots of people complain about it.
So, well, thanks for looking that up.
For the waterline inventory, you guys are working on.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Are you talking about the lead line?
Yeah.
So, are you the contractor now, are they talking to you? They are? Okay.
Daniel, do you want him to talk to you?
But I, I do want to say that today, well, happened last week, you guys qualified for fifteen thousand dollars for this, and if you've already had a contract with somebody, you can ask them to amend it because they have to apply to the I F A. I can get with you tomorrow, Brandy, on this.
Okay.
But you guys, you get that month to pay for this.
Well, thanks for that information.
Yeah.
We're still in that very early stage because I just got him the billing information, he needed like the whole billing, you know, every address, every, so that part is done. I'll, we'll talk about it tomorrow and I'll look up, because he sent me an email that he would like to do like a twenty, thirty-minute conference call over some stuff on the next step, and he's just waiting on me to set a good date for that.
Because this just came out like within the last two weeks, so.
Okay.
We can get it, so I wanted to tell you that.
Thank you, okay, yep, we can talk about it whenever you have time.
You guys got anything else?
One more thing. One more thing. Yeah, and, Nick. Hey, Nick. The recording of the meeting thing, did that pass or not?
I don't know, I never looked, I can look with.
Uh, well, anyway, regardless of pass or not, I mean, we, we, we've talked about it for two meetings now, or three. Apparently, there, there, there's, I mean, being a nonprofit, I don't think it's, what was it? Who told, I don't know who told us, Nick told me, Nick said, it's paying, paying, paying a fee per hour to a nonprofit probably isn't the best way.
Well, John said that. John said that, I told you, I thought, yeah, I have a contract for services, is what I said.
Okay. Well, I don't want the, you know. It was brought up at the county level, too, about something, some form of compensation for the service it rendered.
What's the county going?
They haven't ruled on it either.
Yeah, yeah, I hadn't seen anything, but I just wanted to bring it back. I don't like being a freeloader. Yeah, I like the service. I don't have a state law yet, but it was talked about, the county state law.
It, it looks like it was been paused for two years, was the media report I read.
Okay.
I forget what station reported it, but it looks like it's on pause for a couple of years because so many, and honestly, I'm glad it is because the way it's currently written requires way too much. It would require every committee, every little board, everything. And that's just unnecessary, not way beyond your monthly regular meetings.
Well, yeah, I would think.
It would require, it would require so much, I wouldn't be able to handle it, even with two employees, I don't think I'd be able to handle it. So I'm glad it's, has been paused and it's going to be reevaluated. As far as the county goes, they're waiting on me to present some kind of budget, annual budgets to them before they.
Well, I would suggest, you know, you do the same to the town, you know, whatever meetings you're recording and post on eBay, or not eBay, eBay, uh, yeah, what is YouTube? YouTube, there's so many of them out there.
Yeah, I'll have stuff for you.
TikTok.
I told you, I'm old, but it's stuff. Now, that's not, you got banned on TikTok, don't want those Chinese seem up with it. Okay. eBay, you sell stuff, or buy stuff. I had to go, dang eBay, I don't want this, that was crazy.
You good?
I am, I'm good.
You guys got anything else?
I will say that that transfer pump was supposed to be in tomorrow, but they pushed it to last Wednesday, the one we were like eight months ago, or something like that.
Where's it going now, where's it go?
It's the, between the two digisters, it transfers from one to the other.
Okay.
So, that should be in next week.
Have we paid for it?
Yeah, you have, it was last year.
It was on his last year's purchase, it's good, it's not in this year's budget.
And then we changed all the diffusers down in that digester the other day, too, so, that's all I get.
Good.
I'll make a motion to adjourn if you want to announce.
Yeah, we got, I was going to see if Kevin wanted to say anything.
Well, I'm going to give feedback on the, the irrigation thing we talked about at the, pardon me. Porter still hasn't called me, Mandy actually texted his wife to call me, crickets, so I'll have to go another angle. But anyway, there is a meter in the parking lot, there's a meter in front of Eleanor Asbury's, and there's a meter at Andy Willhite's lot, so absent Andy is not getting a water bill right now. So we could hook into that and do the irrigation there, you could go to your parking lot. Eleanor, you might have to work something out with her, because I think Steve Lordfix still has the apartment up there, at least it's alive on, somebody said he's keeping the cats up there, I'm not sure. So we'd have to work something out with Eleanor, get through with that, but I've worked with Justin McGarvey to find somebody else, maybe get a tear hook, at least give us a quote on the irrigation. It might be too complicated, we might just drop it, but that's where we're at right now. We do have water sources, I don't have anything on banner hiding side up, there's no meter there.
Okay. I did want to say thank you for here at Street, helping us out, I appreciate that. Doug, I wanted to thank you for getting the flags up.
Banners are all, I mean.
I mean, it is May first, so thank you, banners also. I do have one other thing I do want to mention, is somebody on this board going to resign?
Yeah.
There's rumor out there.
I've been hearing a rumor, too.
People have had, said stuff to me about different people coming aboard, and I just, I mean, if you're, somebody's going to resign, it'd be kind of nice to know, or if it's a rumor, that's fine, but.
Somebody got enough time on their hands.
I, no names were mentioned, I just, I just wondered, I mean, there was names mentioned of people that were going to come on the board, but nobody that was leaving the board, so I just wanted, wanted to know, so.
I haven't received any blackmail, drawers.
Well, I think I'm good for a few more years, somebody's turning up. Yeah.
I got another year and a half, I guess.
That's what I hear. So.